Good afternoon, welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Monday, December 18th, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Sorry, did you see me?
Here. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. The Vouchier.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before a city council and profanity is not permitted. Our first registered speaker, Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belts Hoover. Zaka, Zambia. There are Zambian Pittsburghers. Mondial. As Global in Espanol, Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2024. CGSII.RLM.GlobalIntelligence@gmail.com is my primary U.S. email. A concern of Pittsburgh Offices of Council and Mayor is to advance a pro-equity set of policies and programs. I am anti-equity, using inscription, but I am pro-equality in existence and pro-inequality as a consequence of achievement and experience. In the inter-elevator area of the fifth floor City-County Building, outside the council room, blocking the entry, 12th December 2023, a female of Black African descent, Ph.D. claimant affirmed to you go-girl chants, the intersectionalist equity theory of Kimberley Crenshaw, supported by Ganey and Strasburger of the council. Neither the speaker nor Strasburger defined KCIT equity theory. Why not? I have done so in council, 15 June 2022, and on other occasions. Intersectionalist equity theory, the Democratic Party and offices of mayor and council position stresses, one, that the USA has been designed by white males to ensure their advantage; two, that the USA has systematically disadvantaged non-whites and non-males; and three, that the USA must correct this by designating advantage to non-whites and females. Leave Shohei alone, but go after Elon, right? This means to shift resources from white male institutions, dominated institutions and individuals, to non-whites and females, and I view this as racist and sexist. On the one hand, I think that if you will invite females of indigenous, Latin, and Asian descent to speak in the way that this African American did, that would be more satisfactory. On the other hand, if you will bite the bullet and acknowledge that the inscriptionist attitude fails when it comes to Dr. Andrea Liu and Dr. Claudine Gay, who is president of Harvard.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who is a true servant of the Pittsburgh City of Pittsburgh from the 1970s till 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Pennsylvania Constitution is titled, "The Declaration of Rights." The entire article is concerned with establishing the principle that the people are the sovereign, not the state, which would include municipalities and school boards. They shall not harm the people or will be held accountable. Declaration of Rights, what are the rights set forth in the Declaration of Rights of the Pennsylvania Constitution? The Declaration of Rights of the Pennsylvania Constitution predates and was a model for the Bill of Rights of the United States Constitution. It is primarily a list of jumps for the General Assembly in that it prohibits the enactment of laws that would infringe on certain rights. Those rights and prohibitions are set forth in the 28 sections of the Declaration. Section 2, Political Powers. All power is inherent in the people, and all three governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. For the advancement of these ends, they have at all times an inalienable and indecipherable right to alter, reform, or abolish their government in such manner as they may think proper. We have tried for over two years now to have Bon Air school buildings torn down and turned into a green space, but self-proclaimed friends of the mayor and city employees are encouraging developers to buy the schools. The school board would rather spend multiple times the price of the building to keep it instead of cut their losses. We have been harmed by the school closure and the detrimental building. Is the resistance to giving the building to the city for a dollar related to desired kickbacks? The math upholding onto the building makes zero sense. Can we assume that lack of logic and math skills is due to public education, or is there a lining of pockets involved? Where is the fiscal guidance? Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Is there anyone in chambers? Seeing none, that takes us to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have two supplemental papers. Madam Clerk, will you please read both bills, 2325 and 2326?
Bill 2325, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Payment in Lue of Taxes Agreement or Agreements with the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh for the Development of Bedford Dwellings Phase 1A Housing Project. And 2326, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Payment in Lue of Taxes Agreement or Agreements with the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh for the Development of Bedford Dwellings Phase 1B Housing Project.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both bills receive an affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 2158.
Bill 2158, Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2024 Pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
With discussion, Madam President?
So, I know that we had talked to different people. I think we should have people from the administration come to the table. Is there someone here for this? Is this Domi, too? You're sending all these people, you know, I had a small conversation with Brian Ralston, who put it a little bit in perspective for me last night. So maybe you should have sent him to the table, too. Just briefly, could you give us a little, it's my understanding, and I want to say this, if I'm saying this correctly, that we have always charged this fee for the, we've got some concerns from Columbia Gas Company. It's my understanding we've always charged this fee, we just never collected it. Is that accurate, an accurate statement? For the curb cuts, for the, to put in the Columbia Gas, the gas lines?
Patch Cornell, Chief Financial Officer, I will pass this right along to Mobility and Infrastructure.
Yeah. Please introduce yourselves to the public.
Yeah, I'm Angie Martinez. I'm Assistant Director over Planning Policy and Permits with Domi, and I'm here with...
Hi, I'm Katie Weddick. I'm the Senior Right-of-Way Manager with Domi. Thank you. Sorry about that. The last time we were at the table, we had some microphone issues, so revisiting that. Yeah, so we're here to answer any questions that you might have about the right-of-way permits that are in the fee schedule. We know from watching council last week, there were some questions from some of the utilities around something that's appearing in the fee schedule in 2024, which is a $110 service line fee. It's Domi's perspective that this is, you know, a clarifying thing that we're putting in the fee schedule to make it clear that when a service line is done as a part of a capital or mainline project by utility, that there's a separate permit and costs associated with that. These are, you know, to your question, Councilwoman, is, these are fees that have been in the fee schedule for actually decades, and as we transitioned from a in-person permit counter into one-stop PGH, I think that hard coding some of our business practices and our fees, we actually started charging the fees the way they've always been written. And I think that came with a...
You're now just now starting to collect them, is what you're proposing for this following year, is what my question is?
We're proposing to make it very clear to everybody exactly what the fee is, so that there's not a misunderstanding of how it should be applied.
So you intend on collecting them next year, correct?
Yes.
That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus?
Oh, good, thank you. Thank you for being here. Members have been inundated, maybe too strong of a word, with questions from utility companies, and we don't really have the answers to give them. And so this is why we need to have a comprehensive and understanding as to how you reached, not the process by which you reached it, but the justification for the fee that you have set, so that, I mean, our role here is to evoke it, not necessarily to communicate with utility companies as to how and why you achieved this fee. I believe that's an executive branch obligation to do, and I personally would like to ask you if you would, Jeff, did you wish to be part of this, or, okay, that, I just wanted to open the door for you today, so that there's clear communication to Peoples, to Penn American and to Columbia Gas as to how you reached the fee and why it's applicable and why you're asking council to support it. That's really what I'm asking you to do today.
I might ask Katie to speak to how we arrived at the exact dollar figure and then the way we communicated that out to our utility customers.
And if I may add, please, we had a conversation with utility companies prior to this meeting. They are actually watching, so this could be a way to help to buffer or begin sharing that information.
Sure. So when we're talking, you might already know this, when we're talking about a capital project, we're typically talking about, you know, the main line that goes, you know, down the center of the street or at least parallel with the street. And then the service lines, not into the private property, we're only looking at public right-of-way, so it's the perpendicular lines that go from the main line to the curb box until you get to the private property, which is separate from us. And so an opening fee is determined based on the size of the opening and the duration. This is what's been in the fee schedule. And so if you look at this all together, we'd be looking at the size of this main line dig, so the trench you need to put in the main line, and then the size of each of these separate service lines, again, only to the curb box. And doing that math for the customer, for us, like, you know, making sure if the customer said it's two feet by three feet, is it two feet by three feet? Then you do that 100 times for 100 service lines. We're looking to make that process easier for everyone. So for an opening permit, the minimum to cut the street is 80, and the minimum for the sidewalk is 30. And so we said, you know, we'll do the calculation for the main line, and then we'll do the minimum cost for each of the service line digs to try and simplify the process. So that's how we got to the number. And then if we're talking about why are these separate, you have, typically a utility comes in with the main line first. So they do one block, two block, however many blocks of this main line, and then they come back potentially weeks or months later to do all the service lines. So we wanted to make sure that on one block, that permit wasn't open for those whole, you know, four months, let's say, but instead it was open for the main line, then residents could use their street again, then it was, the permit became active again for those service lines, and that we had, you know, our inspectors out appropriately for the main line, our inspectors out again for the service lines, because they are kind of separate-timed projects.
Okay. So it was a whole lot of information that I'm not convinced I'm qualified to understand or to even process. The concern that I have received, and I believe most members have at some point in time, is that it is additional fees, or it adds up to a higher cost per unit for utility companies than it had previously been. Is that a correct understanding?
So from what we can tell with our calculations, kind of, you know, since we've, again, as Angie said, since we've moved into one-stop and we've been improving our processes, our goal continues to be, how can we really shorten the length of these permits for the residents and for everyone?
When you say for residents, you mean for the inconvenience of having the street open?
Yes, and to make sure that they know when the street is actually open.
I see.
And so as we've changed our processes, we're trying to shorten these permits, and the fees are based on the size of the opening and the time of the permit. So as we work to shorten them, the fees should also be short, you know, decreasing as well. And for each permit, you know, there could be some wild cards, but we have kind of, when we've looked across our utilities, the average cost per permit has been decreasing.
So these are, these are not, you know, once a year or once every five-year customers. These are customers that do hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of these a year. So it's justifiable that they have concern, that they want to see the math and run the numbers to make certain that they are not being unduly or overly charged for work that they will continue to do at it, that they previously did at a lower rate. That's a fair question, and I can't answer that question.
So I'm happy, if you want them, I'm happy to share kind of the tables we have here that show the average cost between 2022 and 2023 permits. Happy to share it with utilities as well. And then also a note that we're going to be looking at all of our fees for 2025 to really make sure that we are doing all of this correctly and looking for continuous ways to improve, to help the utilities, to help the residents, and to make sure that everything kind of lines up.
I was going to offer one point of clarity, is we're only talking about work that's associated with a capital or a mainline project. So we're talking about the largest-scale planned work that a utility is doing. They're pulling open the whole street typically, sometimes over several blocks. They're repairing a main line and then coming in, and every utility is different, upgrading or replacing service lines at various addresses. So what, you know, the contention that we're increasing their fees, we disagree with because we've actually built in business practices in order to not escalate the fees associated with these major infrastructure investments. We understand they're going to take longer, by nature they're bigger. And so a few years ago, Domi implemented something that we're calling a mainline cap, which is for projects that are, you know, those planned work. We set an annual dollar amount that, you know, is a cap on that project. Over the course of the past several years, where we've been actually seeing the way this cap has been playing out, we've seen what I see as a concerning degradation of our records, because utilities were basically putting on all sorts of conceivable work into these one permits, because they wanted to get as much work done as possible within that project cap. Over the past year, we've taken, I think, good steps to say, to under, we've met with various utilities to try to better understand exactly how they're doing work, so that we can build a permitting process that allows us to capture the dates the work is happening and, you know, the number of times and sites our inspectors need to go out to make sure the work is done correctly. And I am actually, I'm certain that, you know, the changes that we've made, they've actually resulted in a lower cost per permit for our utilities. And any sort of insinuation that this is a increase without warrant or that the work isn't there, I feel we can speak to, and maybe it's not here at the table.
Yeah.
And we'll speak more robustly with the utilities, I think, in 2024, as we do that utility, or excuse me, that right-of-way fee study that we hope to kick off. But I feel comfortable that we've done our homework with what we've presented in the fee schedule this year.
So, thank you. I appreciate that. That was something I could actually process and make comment on. The, I would, I believe the council as a whole would greatly appreciate your communication directly with the, as I said, Columbia Peoples and Penn American. And the, I guess the last thing I'd like to add is the council's overarching belief in providing for the public safety. And these lines are all being replaced because they are aged-out infrastructure, and it's important work, and it really does need to be done, and we certainly don't want to compromise in any way the ability for the utilities, especially gas companies, to replace a very aged-out infrastructure, but to be able to do it in the most reasonable and cost-effective way that they can. And I certainly am not looking to harm constituency that needs to have this done while we, you know, sort of bat this back and forth. So I don't know if there's appetite that we hold the fee schedule for next Thursday while we work through these last couple things. I'm not sure, I'm not, no, 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 I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, because I know there's other members that may wish to speak, but I really would like to have the opportunity for you to speak to them directly, because I just, I know for certain you're much more knowledgeable on the matter than I am.
I just want, just to interrupt real quick. I would like to wait one more week, because it's not just Domi that's at increasing fees. There are fees for parks, and people are already paying a park tax in the city of Pittsburgh. So I would like to see us come up with some solution that we give residents who are paying the park tax some discount, instead of increasing it for our residents who barely can afford what we have now. I would like to talk about all of the fees, not just one section of the fees. But we've just been so busy trying to get the budget passed, we haven't had a chance to...
Just a point of clarity.
Talk about it all.
We don't have another Standing Committee meeting.
No, but I know we can have a meeting.
Just, there are, there's moving discussion on a number of different platforms here for things that are with us today. I believe procedurally, we could recess this meeting. Open on Thursday, decide our preliminaries, adjourn, and then open Tuesday.
Yes, we could do that.
Which I think could help us to achieve what we're hoping to achieve here. Because we have to finish it by years, and we have to finish it. We just want to make sure we do it the right way. Okay? So do other members wish to engage this?
Yes. So next is Councilman Warwick.
Yeah, so just, you know, because, yeah, I've spoken with Columbia Gas and a couple of others. So just so I'm clear, so there's the mainline cap, so previously, the mainline cap was $10,000.
From 2020, yes, that's when we first established the mainline cap.
So there was like, so there was a $10,000 cap, and that included, as if it, just one big opening, all the service lines. So they do the main thing and the service lines down the, down the row, right?
So truthfully, I think different utilities were interpreting that cap in different ways. We had some that were including the square footage for the service lines within the mainline calculations. We had others that were separating it out. We had others still that were, as a result, keeping their permit open for longer, because they were putting the calculations in there for the sake of showing that the work was happening, but then that resulted in them having to maintain the permit for a year or longer. So all that to say that I think there was, there was inconsistency with the way the cap was being applied, and this is an attempt to make it crystal clear as to how we apply the cap.
Okay, well, just to clarify, and I am not advocate, and these are just, I'm just sort of clarifying, so I think for the, for the utility, oh, sorry, for the utility folks that I've spoken with, their understanding is before there was a $10,000 cap, and now there's a $10,000 cap plus $110 per service line. So that's why they see it as paying more, because they are paying more.
Yeah, and Domi's sort of response to that is, if you, you know, the cap is actually not in the fee schedule. The cap is by, you know, our sort of rules and regs and administration. So if they were to pay the fee for these excavations per the posted fee schedule, they would be paying magnitudes more than that $10,000.
So, so then what is the, what is the main, like, I guess I don't understand, it's, where is that written down? I mean, what...
The mainline cap came about through the Domi rules and regulations, because the utilities brought concern similar to like what they're bringing now.
Okay.
And as we, you know, as I've talked about, we try and shorten the permits, the length of the permits. A lot of utilities aren't even hitting these caps anymore, which is great. But a lot of them, or inconsistently, they're not necessarily including all of those service lines, those calculations anywhere. They're kind of just not being included in the permit calculations. And so we're trying to do a better job with enforcement, and that's leading to this $110 that, again, just hasn't been being applied consistently, whether it's part of the cap or not part of the cap. And I think it was never, it was before I was here, but it was never intended to be part of the cap. The cap was really meant as that mainline cap, because the main line is what takes so long and can really escalate and cost so much.
So, just so I'm clear, so the service line fees existed already?
The service line fees...
They just weren't being enforced?
It's just a different, so, you know, they've opened, they've cut open the street for the main line.
Right.
They've closed it back temporarily. Now they're opening it again for the service lines.
Right.
And so our opening fees are based on the size of each opening. So rather than calculate the size of each service line, the 110 just comes from the minimum fee.
Okay, okay, I'm tracking, but it sounds like at least the utilities that have been talking to us were just doing one giant permit for all of those, for the whole thing, mainline and service lines altogether.
It varied between utilities.
And then getting it into their, into their $10,000 cap.
And that created really a nightmare record-keeping and inspection issue for us. It also led to us having to filter questions from the public and members of council, why is this no parking sign being written for 265 days? Well, it's because they're doing all the mainline work and all the service line work under one big permit, as opposed to coming in, doing their main line. Sometimes they close the site up over the winter, and then they'll come back and do it, service lines, later. And so as Katie said, you know, our goal is to get, really get the utilities to tell us when they're working, and when they're working. And when we just, we had this big, wide-open process, it just, it created all sorts of difficulties. We also had difficulties being able to capture our inspections results on these permits, because they were trying to cover such a large geographic area that we couldn't properly, the inspector would go out there and not really know what they were looking for, or if they found one area that was deficient, they couldn't just fail that part of the permit, you have to fail the whole permit. So this breaking down the big capital projects into things that are more manageable and based on the dates that the utilities are working, it allows us to keep those records, and it allows us to have better oversight of the work that's happening in the right-of-way.
Okay, and so the other thing, just, and again, this is, I do not have a dog in this fight, I'm just sort of trying to voice what I've heard, and then hopefully they can just watch this, and I won't have to talk about it again. But, so the other concern is service line work, so the utility is, you know, doing the main line, and then they are doing the service lines for the customers for free. And the, and the assertion is that, well, now, if, you know, this sort of jeopardizes our ability to do that, in which case then the customer would have to do, because they're doing for free, we're doing for free to the house, right? Like, so, I just wanted to put that there. we're doing for free to the house, right? Like, so, I just wanted to put that there.
We're only charging them for the piece in the right-of-way. That's, that's the public infrastructure or it's the utility's infrastructure. So what I believe they're doing for free for the individual is the curb box into the private property and we're not involved in any of that. We're only looking at main line to the curb box and that is owned by the utility.
But they are being charged for that as service line separately? I mean, I just wanted, so that is what they're saying that, I mean.
I, I think in purport, I agree with what Katie said, but I would answer the question differently. And that's, we have a responsibility as the department that is charged with managing the right-of-way to be having eyes on the construction that's happening and cutting open a street is the most invasive thing you can do in the public right-of-way. And we want to know the dates and we want to have the inspectors out there to make sure that the street is restored properly. The fees themselves, we, we based the number, we arrived at it by charging the sort of lowest cost within the existing fee structure. And as a, as a proportion of, you know, what the fee costs to what the cost of the construction is, we're talking minimal, minimal. And I don't have like exact rates from the utilities, but just as, you know, by way of demonstration, I know that we've had, you know, folks who have paid $30,000, residents, up to $30,000 to repair a broken sewer line. So, that's the cost of cutting open the street and replacing the pipe and restoring it. So, I don't know that the $110 fee that covers DOMI's processing has the benefit of record-keeping, has the benefit of making sure we have an inspector out there, is the thing that is preventing the utility or will prevent them from doing that work.
Right, so ju, just to play devil's advocate, right, for the utility. Would there be a world where we could say to the utility, if you are doing this service for free for our resident, right, connecting to their house, right? Could we waive the $110? Like, do the permit and have it, I'm just, I mean.
I think these are questions that we want to ask during the fee study because we've never looked at our fees comprehensively. The street excavation fee schedule is the most confusing thing that we administer, I think, in the right-of-way permit office. And I think that, you know, we need to get to 2025 where hopefully we have a more transparent, more legible fee structure. And then we can talk about things like, you know, where there's accommodations or, you know, other, other places to meet in the middle. And I think to Councilman Kraus's earlier comment, we will engage with the utilities around looking at new fees. Right now, we're trying to work within the existing structure. And I know that because the existing structure is so imperfect, it raises a lot of additional questions. But I feel comfortable about what we've presented here.
And so, so then maybe in like six months or a year's time, because DOMI is, you know, because we are shortening the amount of time that, you know, that these permits last, that might be reduced. And then we can do an analysis of the data and then really see who's paying, you know, compared to what you paid over the last whatever year now and see if there's a savings.
Yes.
In a six months to a year's time and then adjust from there. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next is Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought we, you ironed out a bunch of stuff on that little, little, you know, scratch paper over there. And I feel bad, yeah, I feel bad that I couldn't fully pay attention to some of that. But, so, the 265-day thing is, is wild with the permit. You have people in the community going, what's going on? Like, what's going on? I can't park in the street for 265 days? Yes, that's, that's not good. And then, or they just don't know when that's going to happen. There's no notification. It's already hard enough to, I mean, those signs will go away in a couple of weeks just because they're not permanent signs. And then that creates more problem. So, and I spoke with a few over the phone about it, spoke with Brian Ralston, spoke with a few different other people about this. And what I heard was that the formula is different. But the, but the cost of like roughly $10,000 would be what they're going to have to pay anyway. Is that true?
So there's the $10,000 main line cap plus the $110 per service line. But again, they might not hit that $10,000. So it's $10,000 maximum for the main line plus $110 per service line.
I think it's, it's kind of an apples-to-oranges comparison because they, some of the utilities were factoring in the square yard measurements for their service line in their main line numbers. And now we're separating it out. So.
Say that again, they're.
They, they were, they were factoring in, some of them, were factoring in the extents, like square footage or square yard of the service line into the main line calculation.
Okay.
Now we're splitting it out. So it's an apples-to-oranges comparison, I think, to ask, are they paying less or more? Because it's really going to depend on the number of service lines and then the size of the excavation.
How much more are we talking about? So, so the $10 cap is for a project or like annual?
It's an annual fee for a project.
So annual fee for a project, so like, have you calculated out what the additional cost would be to the utility?
I would say that some utilities have already started doing this, PWSA being a big one. I think they've done it all of 2023, correct me if I'm wrong. And we've calculated that they've saved money.
That includes the cost to go to, from the curb to the house?
PWSA is replacing the whole thing for bloodlines, yeah.
So, you said the cost, their costs actually went down?
Yes, when we look at average cost.
This is actually just a improving reporting?
Yes.
Okay, so, so how do we get you in the room with that utility to hash this out?
We're happy to meet with Columbia again. And we'll be meeting with all of the utilities at the beginning of the new year to make sure everybody understands how the, the fees and the permits are supposed to be applied for.
And we're going to make sure we're meeting with the utilities regularly, all as one group, so that we all stay on the same page.
So, the meeting will be with, you're saying in the future there will be all with one group, or?
We are happy to meet with everyone individually and we will also be holding full group meetings.
Yeah. It'd be interesting to have the full group meeting, just so everyone's on the same page with what the change is.
We've done it before and, you know, part of the challenge with administering these fees is that the utilities all do their work a little bit differently. And so we have to, you know, develop a process, procedure, and a fee schedule that we can apply fairly to all of the utilities. And so, you know, what one company may, you know, not like, another company may say this works really well for us. But we have to, again, it just, to me, it goes back to the records and the inspectors. And as long as that's, you know, what is driving DOMI's decision to change our business practice, I feel comfortable with us, you know, doing those things.
Because when a utility goes and says, we're going to have to raise rates for our customer, that kind of alerts every, in the whole PWSA, raising rates, let's just say, you know, we're proposing different rate increases and they have to go to the PUC and this whole, a lot of attention gets drawn on that. And so whenever a company says, we're going to have to raise rates, like, that's not, I don't think anybody takes that lightly. Especially since we represent all, I'm, this is, I'm going to arrive to what I want to say here. I'm just saying like, you know, that alerts people. And I would really like to, I almost want to be there whenever you take, okay, you did this project last year. Let's do the math, like, you know, just like, like the math teachers we used to have, you know, up on the chalkboard. Take this project, so we're all like sitting there going, oh, yeah, nothing changes. We just have better reporting. Because, you know, it just helps, other than just playing a game of, you know, phone where things, yeah, turn, turn from, you know, saying banana comes out orange on the other end of the phone line. So, anyway, I'm just rambling now. I'm good, thanks.
I lost you.
I mean, this is, to me, it just seems very simple and I'm like, why can't we just all arrive and agree on what's, what we're talking about here? So, someone needs to get in the room, one of us needs to be there, all of us needs to be there. Because, yeah, because I don't, I don't want to see rates increase. I don't think anyone here does. I think it's just a misunderstanding. If it is a misunderstanding, I'd like to see that, you know, take place. But I already set my time's up, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. So while I am concerned about, some of my colleagues have questions on other parts of the fee schedule, I think this part we need to support. And I think this is the right solution. And on behalf of the senior citizen on Gross Street in Bloomfield who couldn't get the utility to come back and fix his curb until his brother literally tripped and fell on his face, I am supporting this. On behalf of the constituents in Highland Park that had to put up with open streets, utility work for 18 months straight, on one permit that we couldn't get inspected and had to put up jackhammers every morning at 7:00 a.m., unpredictably for 18 months straight, we need to support this. On behalf of the residents in Lawrenceville on Main Street that couldn't get their curbs and catch basins fixed because the utility had that open permit that we couldn't get inspectors out for 18 months, this is what we need, right? So maybe the other districts haven't had as much of the main line utilities replaced. I do represent, most of us represent, you know, the city is an old city. But some of the 1860s streets, some of the 1880s streets where the utility lines were more than 100 years old that have been prioritized. This is why we couldn't get those cold patches fixed on Penn Avenue until people literally drove over them and hurt themselves. I had a mom and a kid wreck their bikes and have facial injuries and have to go to Children's Hospital because those cold patches sat there in a completely unacceptable condition for six straight months. I had people in Highland Park who broke the axles of their cars because of the cold patching and the open permits that were just sinkholes, right? And so the utility still had the open permit, it's not closed, there's no inspection, and the cold patch just sinks 10 inches, right? And so, this is, we need the inspectors out there, we need to know, we need those utilities to tell us exactly which addresses they're doing when, exactly which blocks of the program, not a mile of street, which is what they've done, right? It's like, they're pulling these permits for something like 10 city blocks at a time. And your constituents will call your office because they had to go to Children's Hospital because of the bad cold patch, because they have to list jackhammers at 7 o'clock every morning because they broke the axle in their car, because they can't get the utility to come back and fix their sidewalk. That has been in that condition for nearly a year because they didn't get to it before the winter and now it's still open and there's an open pit right in front of their door. So, I'm definitely willing to tread this part of the fee schedule. Like, let's, let's not keep doing it the same day. And yes, that utility did contact me and I refused to talk to them and I passed them in the hallway and I said, pay it. That's my advice. Pay the new fees. Because this will help keep the permits to the places and the times that we can know where they are and inspect them. So, I am not concerned on the utility's behalf. I am concerned on residents and the completely abysmal quality that they're getting from the utilities and their subcontractors and their subcontractors. So, that's my rant. I think I kept it shorter than the other, the other members. But if there is interest in talking about the other fee schedule, it's true, it's come to us late in the day. We've had a lot of budgetary items. I am concerned about some of the other rates, especially around parks and park shelters. So I'm amenable to what other members want. But I am here to speak in defense of trying something different with the DOMI permits. So thank you for your work. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? First round, first round. If not, actually, wholeheartedly concur with Councilman Gross's assessment relative to the utilities. Second round, Madam President, followed by Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if anybody mentioned, was there, was there an additional fee to the resident for the curb cut for the Columbia gas lines, for the gas lines?
The city does not assess any fee to residents for utilities that are doing work.
So you're saying that maybe Columbia Gas might though?
I, I can't say.
So they might. I'll take that as a might. They could.
I think they would have to go to the P, I, I think that they would need, there would be some oversight of the rate that is outside of the city's authority that would, I think, have to either comply with existing PUC rates or they would need to go to the PUC to ask for more.
So I just want to say, I think for me, it's just the overall fee schedule, knowing what has been increased by what percentage. And it seems we've just now got an updated version. So let me just show you, this is the, the first version that we got, that we had, was this big. So trying to see that was almost impossible. Then we got a new version, thanks to our budget director, and it was this big. But it still didn't include all the increases. And now we have a fee schedule that's this big and includes the fee schedule increases. And so I'm glancing over that. So I have.
And decreases.
And some decreases. What are the decreases? Do you know offhand what the decreases are?
There are a few decreases to better align with actual costs and wages in terms of some of the public safety reimbursable fees. And then, there are a few instances where some of the structures of fees decrease, for example, in permits licenses and inspections. In some cases, the, the structure of the fee changed itself. Let's see if I can find a few more. There were, I mean, a lot of the fees did not change at all from year over year is, is one of the other things as well.
And I think I questioned you a second ago, off camera, about the fees for public safety. And it was the Bureau of Fire and there are fees there per hour. And I said, are these the expected or projected numbers for the increased contracts? And you said yes. So.
They're projected, still subject to collective bargaining. Until it's done, it's not done.
So, that's my question is, so I want to know, can council amend these? Because I've heard before we can amend them. And then I have an opinion from a previous solicitor and I can't remember if it's written out, a formal opinion, but that we could not change it, the fee schedule, once we approve it. So does anybody know the answer to that? And can we have it in writing before we vote? So, and I just say, for me, it's some of the increases and the things that are concerning to me are the parks. I see parks, like playgrounds going, the shelters going up to $400 in areas, almost $400 in areas. Like, the West End is 380-something to rent a building that is really in, in need of renovations itself. And so, and I worry that there's, we're, I worry that we're pushing the people out that actually are paying the park tax from actually renting and affording our parks that they're paying for. So, I kind of want us to revisit that a little bit. Because I think before we, before I can vote for this, we'd have to have something in for city residents. And I just want to look at some, and I also notice we're increasing our parking for city employees. And, did you see that on there? Okay. So I worry about that too because we, we have a difficult time now attracting employees. We don't have childcare, we don't have places to park, and now we're going to increase the fee. So, it's just, and I know it's a cost of doing business and you're, you're really challenged with trying to come up ways to find the funding to do the things that we want and to have the things that we want with not raising taxes. So I understand you're in a very difficult situation and I appreciate all the work that you do. But, you know, our, and on this table, we're supposed to be advocating for our residents and making sure that we're also bringing their concerns to light. And for us, it's, those are some of my concerns. But I do appreciate that there are some decreases. I appreciate that even the increases don't seem very dramatic. I think the highest I've seen was 15% on something. That maybe, no, 22, I see a 22, sorry. Okay, so I'm seeing a little bit higher, but most of them, the average, it seems like 3%, 4% increases. So with that said, I need time, more time to absorb some of this and to have some conversations. So if it votes today, I'll vote no. If we wait, I'll vote to hold or whatever. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Hey, what's happening? I'm back again. So I, so I wanted to commend you all for something here. The PRT transit pass, so that's what I'm pleased by. So, do you want to take the win on that?
Sure. So, well, I won't take the win. Actually, Councilmember Warwick's office worked very closely with Director Kellerman to work into some of that. But the, the idea is, part of the, the reason that the employee fees are tentatively scheduled to increase, one, they haven't increased in over 20 years. They're severely undermarket for downtown. But some of the offset would then go to help subsidize commuter benefits for city employees. And Director Kellerman is working through the, the structure of that.
Yeah, so I'm just basically, I guess I didn't know the structure. So before it was ninety-seven dollars to, for an employee to purchase a pass.
So right now, if you sign up for the, the monthly connect card pass, it hits every pay forty-eight thousand seventy-five cents. And the, the idea is to only have employees pay one of those, and the city would subsidize the rest.
Okay, so it's fifty percent off.
Correct.
Great job on that. Uh, yeah, there is the increase in employee parking, and then I was looking at all of our permit fees go up for commercial. By the way, I love this percent change thing here. I'm gonna have you sort it next year.
Whatever you need.
No, I can sort it, I'll just.
No, we, we sent that file out last week, thanks to Director McDevitt for, for reprinting.
Oh, you sort based on column C?
You can have him print it however you need to.
I like it. Well, it just, it's very helpful, and I think it shows very good transparency what's going on here. Because the residential permit fees go up twenty-five percent, the commercial base, minimum base goes up fifteen percent. There's forty-three percent for commercial overtime inspection, forty-three percent. Who requests that? Is that the?
So those are things that move for accelerated permit review. That is an additional service that is offered by PLI, and it's people who opt into that.
So the developer opts into that, or the owner opts into that. All right. Just hang with me one second here.
I don't like when Jen's so quiet.
Thatcher's got a cover.
I'll let her handle it.
So tell me how this works. Does this work that everyone? Oh, wow. So all these hundred percent increases, can you explain this? Where we go for all events, and now we'll be charging like a hundred to a hundred and ninety-five percent more to have anyone from a first-year firefighter to a battalion chief at an event?
So those are, a lot of times, third parties will pay to have crossing guards, EMS, medics, paramedics, police officers, firefighters at their events for the various protective services. Fire watch is something that's relatively new.
Yeah, so it seems like a pretty big jump.
And we haven't fully worked that into the schedule before now.
What's that?
We haven't fully worked that into the schedule because it is a relatively new service that the Bureau of Fire has been offering.
Oh, okay, so these fees were just created like last year?
They, they were in the fee study last year, and they're kind of right sizing to actually reflect what the cost of sending a firefighter to an event for fire watch would be.
Uh huh, and have you talked to any, like, will they still be able to have these events?
My understanding from the Bureau of Fire is yes.
Okay, because it's a, it's a big jump, you know? So for instance, firefighters, what type of event requests firefighters?
So if you have events, theater events where there's smoke or anything in the production and has to override the fire safety system, that's when you have someone there who's, who's ready and willing to watch for any sort of threat, fire threat, fire.
Unless you had, if you had Skip McCray in an event.
Sorry, I'm taking up council's time here. Okay. I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chair.
I was telling. Turn your mic on, turn your mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know it was on.
I'm sorry, oh, God. Apologies that I've been kind of distracted and running back and forth and, and doing some things in the office. But if I understood what I was hearing on the TV, that there's a desire to revisit the, the fee schedule in a more holistic manner, and that if that is indeed the case, is, why are we doing it right now? Why are we doing these fee changes now if there's a desire to sort of pull back and, and do a more holistic and overview of fee schedule?
I think the, the best rationale for that is because getting, we're building the practice and procedure to have them apply for their service lines separately for the reason of better accounting of the inspections and the dates. And so because we want, we don't want to wait for that, because right now we're having such issues with our record keeping that we want to get this new process off the, off the ground in 2024.
There, there is, I don't know how to say what I want to say. There is, there is reason to understand the councilwoman's argument with the frustration that we hear from constituency when these kinds of projects are overextended and people are inconvenienced far beyond what is realistic inconvenience, right? We understand that. And at the same time, I'm always mindful of the fact that we want to protect the public at large. These are important updates that absolutely need to be done, there's no getting around them. It's a very aged infrastructure. And I am just arguing for a, a sense of understanding and balance in, in that when utility companies are coming in and making these significant changes that we understand, they understand the cost of doing business, right? And the, the imposition in which they place many, many, many people. And try to, this is not a new topic, we have dealt with this for as many years as I've been on, on council. Every time we open a street, someone's inconvenienced in some way, shape, or form. I'm not looking to penalize anyone. There's a cost of doing business, and we need, we understand that there's a cost of doing business and what the reasonable cost is. I just hope we find a, a, a good, you know, center position there in, in the process. I, I am leaving in a few minutes to, to attend a meeting with Senator Costa that was pre-planned. I, I'm happy to follow the will of the body on this vote, at least. I'd like to be able to take this vote. I'm going to join the meeting by, via Zoom, Mr. Chair, so that I will be on. But if it's the will of the body to hold this a week, pass it, I don't have a sense, so. But I'm happy to support the will of the body.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second round. Councilman Warwick?
I just had a quick question about the public safety around, like, having police and fire at just community events for fun, like, not as a presence, but, you know, like, just for the kids.
Right, my, I believe that routes through the Bureau, and that is separate from this.
Okay, so there's.
That is not this.
There's no fee.
I don't believe so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because, yeah, okay.
Are you done, Councilman Warwick?
Yeah, that was all, I just, yeah, okay.
I do have one question before third round, and Madam President, we have added in fees for parades. Less than two hours on a weekday is five hundred, less than two hours on a weekend is a thousand, more than two hours on a weekday is two thousand, and more than two hours on a weekend, or a holiday, is three thousand. What is that fee for?
So those, those are the permits that are associated with actually being able to host parades in the seat of Pittsburgh. I know that there are amounts that are set in code, and they typically do not meet the, the threshold for the amount of time and effort that goes into hosting a parade. Not only police, but public works for cleanup, for setup, barricades, things like that.
Okay, thank you. I think I have this correct, Councilman, that it's the explicit duty of our finance director to set the fee schedule. We then have the option to pass it or reject it. But if we want changes.
I amended it before.
I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you what I think. But if we want changes here, then we have to work with the finance director to come back with the appropriate changes so that we can then pass something, is my understanding of it.
You have that, I like that from law, saying that in writing. Because I don't believe that to be true, because I remember doing it before, that's all, unless they let me do it.
Would you like our solicitor to speak to it?
Is our solicitor here?
Ours. Well, we have two, so.
Well, maybe I should have them both. Well, go ahead. If I don't like what you say, I'll call the other one.
Solicitor, yeah, if you could.
You can sit here if you want.
How's that?
I guess for public record, we need you to say who you are.
Sorry, I don't know how to function.
No.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Jesse Exelus, Deputy City Solicitor.
Oh, it's on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I was talking to Solicitor Friedson, and I believe your description is correct, as in the code specifically states that the director of finance has to, they shall, set the fee schedule. And then city council has the option through their rules of council to reject or approve that fee schedule.
I see everybody shaking their heads. I'm gonna have to change that law, but go ahead.
So looking based on the words in like, just right now, off the top of my head being asked, it seems that the director would have to have that final say of the fee schedule. So it'd be best for city council to work with the director to make those changes.
Or to change the law.
I'm asking a question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So Solicitor, when you say accept or reject, it's in its totality, right? Not piecemeal.
I'm okay voting now.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. When you say the council's role is to accept or reject, it's in its totality, is the entirety of the fee structure, one way or the other.
Correct, that's my, that's my thought on that.
We, you know, we, and I won't be here, but I mean, we, we have, we have a, I mean, we have a, a duty to, 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 because we do this every year, right? We have, we have a duty to do this earlier on. I'm as guilty as the next person, I'm not going to absolve myself. The councilwoman is clearly passionate about the subject, she brings it up every year. We want to, you know, we want to do right by the constituency, provide for what they need to do to have their picnics or parades or those kinds of things. And at the same time, understand realistically and reasonably that there is a cost to doing these things. And while we don't profit from them in any way, we have to cover our cost. We are always chided to run government like a business, right? That's what you need to do here, but business is permitted to pass the cost of doing business onto the consumer. But God forbid we ever do, because, boy, do we get banged for doing that. It's just, you know, it's a catch-22, so. I, you know, I appreciate the council president's passion, and at the same time, we really do need to do a better job of doing this earlier in the year.
Thank you. Fourth round, Madam President.
I was gonna say motion to hold. You, do you want to hold? Is that the will?
So, point of clarity, implicit in a hold is that you're also going to motion to recess this meeting?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
May I? It, it would be to our next standing, it would be to our next regular meeting, we're recessing.
Well, no.
We'll put this, we'll just reconvene this meeting.
We can actually just leave this on the table, leave it open on the table. And then when we reconvene, it'll just come back up for discussion. Yes, right, agreed.
Okay.
And we can do that by consensus. And I can cheer, can just actually just move us on.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so.
But can we work together in the meantime?
I'm about to say, if, if you have concerns, please speak with Director Gula between now and the twenty-eighth.
In the law department, the change in the law.
Whatever potential changes members want to see are hopefully reflected, okay? You're going to join? All right.
Yeah.
So we'll leave this bill open on the table. That takes us to Bill twenty-three hundred.
Bill twenty-three hundred, resolution amending resolution five hundred of 2023, which re-appropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version Six.
Motion to approve. This is your.
No, we're still a man, but it's your.
It's your, I believe this is your coposten.
Sorry, I'm sidebar. A motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
I think, I just want to thank members of the public, and I think members are supporting this. We know, this is, this is really just an amendment to the ARPA line. I've touched base just really briefly with the department directors to figure out how they would continue the, the work that they've started. We just don't want that work to stop. If council will recall, we had not amended previous budgets to do a pilot project. And then we were lucky to get a federal ninety thousand dollar grant to actually ramp up, which is marvelous. And so we have ramped up several kinds of projects. We can talk about in January what those projects look like, which, which districts they were in, kind of what scale they are, and talk about how we want to fold this into operations in, in 2024. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
Need a motion to waive the rules so that heavy equipment from Department of Public Works can be approved.
So moved. Not that I want to, but so moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion on the P cards? As seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee, chaired by Councilman Cockhill. Want to defer paper, Bill twenty-two forty-three.
Bill twenty-two forty-three, resolution amending resolution number four fifty-three of two thousand and two, providing for an amended lease for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police Headquarters located at twelve oh three Western Avenue, extending the term six more years and providing for the payment thereof.
Got to get it on the table.
Yeah, motion for brief discussion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman?
I'd like to call Director Schmidt to the table. Director, you want to come up? So, go ahead, introduce yourself first.
I'm Lee Schmidt, Public Safety Director.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. So like last week with the first vehicle contract, I got a lot of feedback from members about the length of the lease. And what we're really trying to achieve is a shorter term lease and hopefully to purchase a building in less than six years, not being tied into the six years. So we had a brief conversation out there, and if you'll just fill us in as to, you know, what you hope to come back with after we vote this.
Sure, so I did reach out to Tony Ross from Ross Development to discuss pricing. He felt the lowering of the monthly rent is already, you know, he's lowered it from what the previous contract was. So he wasn't willing to negotiate anything on that. But he did say, we can execute the purchase option at any point by the way the contract's written, which we'll get all that language over to Mr. Friedson and to council so you can take a look at it. He is obligated to accept our purchase as long as it is following.
Enter our budget director, I just want to, and clerk, sorry, sorry.
As long as it's. As long as it's within the guidelines of the contract. So basically, the contract spells out all the steps that are taken, that the city has to follow, that Ross Development has to follow to make sure both sides feel they're fairly represented and that the purchase price is fair and reasonable. And if that's the case, you know, he's willing to, he's willing to let us enact that at any point throughout this contract, whether that be year one or year six.
So obviously, we really don't have much of another choice. We, we all realize that here at the table. We're not going to enter into the six-year lease, or we are with the option to purchase at any time, is that right?
Correct, we are with the option to purchase at any time.
With a purchase, now, if we decide we want to purchase, it's float of bond in two years, and the market value is twenty-five million dollars, we have that option to buy? Or does he, can he still say no, or, you know, I mean, so, so we'll have the option to buy?
We will have the option to purchase.
But only if he wants to sell?
No, if we, if we initiate it, he's obligated to sell as long as we are providing a fair market value and we accept liabilities and everything that's, like I said, it's written in the contract so we can get that to everybody, all the staff, so you can have a better look at it.
Okay, now, I'm going to rely on our chair and Madam President as far as the best way to do this. We're kicking it back and forth, whether to vote it down, come back with amendments next week and then approve it then, or just hold it open because now we already have the meeting recessed.
Well, we have a recess, yes. My recommendation would be to, to leave it open and then amend it when we come back.
Yeah, I just have a brief comment since I'm running out the door. I just want to thank you, Director, for. I just wanna thank you, Director, for, you know, this, I don't have to outline the history of this. We, we understand it already, and you and I talked about this a year ago, and, and Deputy Mayor Pollock, I just greatly appreciate, uh, your willingness to, to work with the council and to find a compromise. And this sounds like a good compromise to me, and, um, I wanna thank you on the record and happy to support. And I would agree with the, uh, with our, our chair. We leave it open and, uh, and we'll have a busy Thursday, but we'll get things done right. Yeah, thank you, Director. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Madam President?
I just wanna thank Councilman Coghill for also cheering and leading this and, uh, giving us some direction on this. But I do wanna thank you because you've been very easy for us to work with, and I appreciate it. And I think you're one of the few directors that realize you work for the mayor's side and city council's side, so thank you very much for that. But, um, I do have some concerns about this. I would, you know, I really think that we should try to negotiate a two-year lease. I think council's prepared to vote it down. Um, so I think it's really important imperative to try to do something a little bit more prudent for the taxpayers. And at the same time, we also know that there's public safety at hand. But I think that's oftentimes what people use when they think that they're gonna get us to vote however they want, is it's the public safeties at, at stake. But there's plenty of places and buildings that we own that we could try to set something up or do something a little bit differently. There's a lot of universities in the city of Pittsburgh. There's a lot of empty spaces there. Um, I just think that there's, as, you know, we saw, you know, County Executive Fitzgerald using CCAC to try to make sure that, um, he felt void when he needed it and, and we needed it. So I'll just say, um, I think council's ready to do what we have to do, so I think it, I would hope that whomever, uh, you're negotiating with, I don't know the person, I know a lot of people who do, I do not know the person. I hope that, um, they're willing to work with us on, on some of this, because it's in the best interest of the city of Pittsburgh. And, you know, when people make a lot of money off the city of Pittsburgh, it's nice for them to sometimes give back to the city of Pittsburgh. And it would be really amazing, just like when we, all I had to do with PNC, with your permission, and Councilman Coghill called them, and all I had to do was say, Councilman Coghill put his name on the line off there, and they're like, okay, we'll get, we'll go down. I didn't have to say anything more. It was just his name and his reputation. So I think that, um, we would love something like that, some kind of, you know, uh, relationship like that with the owner of this building that we've given a lot of years and a lot of time and a lot of money, and I think it's time for Pittsburgh to think, um, of our future. And whether or not we get a two-year contract, or, um, maybe we can, it would even be, uh, wise of us to, in some ways, maybe to, and terminate a contract in the middle of it, and if we have to. But I think in the meantime, we need to form a task force or something to work with you and the administration on getting something more permanent where we own and we're not spending this kind of, this kind of money. When I think of the money we could be paving roads with or, you know, maintaining trees or doing development and kind of, it, it just makes me sick, the money that's going out. Um, and, and I just think we have a responsibility to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. Um, I wanna say, uh, much of, I wanna reiterate much of what, um, has already been said, and just to say that, you know, we, we, we should have exited the lease years ago. We didn't, and so I think all that council's aiming to do here is to, to get out of this longstanding lease and just stop paying for, you know, the lease of a building and, and start to own it, um, ideally, in my, in my view. I know not, not, not all of my colleagues share that sentiment, but, um, uh, as soon as possible, ideally after we've retired a lot of debt, and we have the flexibility then to, you know, which we're not necessarily in the position to do right now, to, to do what's necessary to have the, um, the ability to purchase, if that's what we, the direction we go. I, um, my only concern on the process, the suggested process, is that we will then be discussing something very consequential in the midst of a time when, um, to be honest, not a whole lot of people, the public, you know, others will be really, you know, having their eyes on this, on this important issue, this important fiscal, and I'm just posing the question, why not just, um, hold for a couple of weeks or vote it down today and reintroduce in the beginning of the year when we just have a fresh set of eyes and energy and with the understanding that we're working in good faith with you to ultimately pass something, um, before the end of the, the lease agreement at the end of January, I believe. So I'm just putting that out there for others to respond to as they get to their, um, their turns.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I just want to, um, recall the numbers that we talked about last week briefly. So this building, um, when we asked, we found out that it was 60,000 square feet. Um, we looked up prices of other buildings and recently 110,000 square foot buildings, so nearly twice the size. Nearly twice the size of Police Headquarters on the River, 26th Street in, in the Strip District, um, with River French Trail and, um, I think only about five years old, just sold for 15 million. Right? And so, and that was the Burns and White, um, law firm building. And then, um, we've spent to date on this 60,000 square foot building, $27 million in rent. And we're being asked to spend 8 million more over six years. And so that brings that up to $35 million. And then the hypothetical offer for purchase, we don't know how many millions that would be. Uh, so I still really am questioning the whole deal. And, um, there's certainly 60,000 square feet available in the city that either we own or we don't, that I think would be cheaper. I think, um, all commercial real estate, whether that's on the north side, in the Strip District, or downtown, all of the landlords are really scrounging for tenants. Those are, those are exactly the segment of the real estate market, which is hard pressed right now because most of the big square foot customers are downsizing and breaking their leases. And that's, that's the rev, we had a long discussion here at the table, it seems like only a week or two ago, about, um, you know, what our revenue projections are and how it's being hurt by the drop in commercial real estate demand. Right? So we know there's a drop in commercial real estate demand. Um, so I, I am really not favorable of spending another, going up to $35 million on a lease, right, in total, for a 60,000 square foot space. Um, and I think whether council votes this through or doesn't, we start looking now for another location for Police Headquarters. Um, and we should have been, we should have been doing that for a while. And so, I mean, this is the first time I've really spent an in-depth amount of conversation about it. Um, and I wish that I, you know, we had been having this conversation much earlier, so I appreciate everybody's time and attention on it. Um, and I'll just stop my comments there, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, one, Police Headquarters is 80,000 square feet, not 60. Not that it makes a shit.
I think originally Commander Ragland said it was 60, and then we did find out it was 80, and the property room is, which is just a warehouse space, is 20,000.
To Councilwoman, um, Strasburgers, I was suggesting to leave it open because I was under the impression that members wanted to vote this by the year's end. If members are willing to take time, as you suggest, to put sort of fresh eyes on it, think it through, and really digest it, and we have until the end of January to do so, you, and members wanted to make a statement, we could indeed vote it down. It could be reintroduced next year, and we could go through the process. I was merely suggesting one which would allow us to get it passed by year's end. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
Okay, uh, I'll do what the body wants to do here. Um, I, I, I do think we're trapped there, so we're gonna have to, you know, at least lease it for a year or two. Just wanna make sure that option to buy is at the right, whether it's next year or the year after, when we're in a better position that we can buy it, whatever the price might be. Um, so what I'm asking is this. If we, you come back with a new agreement or a, you know, amendment to the agreement stating that we can negotiate next year. If we negotiate next year, we find out the fair market value is $22 million. Now then he has the option to say, well, it may be fair market value, but I feel I want $30 million for it. So where, do we get locked in where we absolutely can buy this place, or can he just play, you know, um, shell game with us and, you know, so?
Sorry.
No.
I thought we-
So reading through the contract, talking to our lawyers and his as well, um, it is an obligation as long as it is. So what happens, it's again outlined in the contract, that Ross Development can have an assessment, we can have an assessment, and then the two assessors, depending on how far apart they are, or if they're the same, that's kind of the value that would be agreed upon, barring any additional expenses, if there is some liability or anything there that we would take on taxes, some transfer fees, that sort of thing. So he would be obligated to take it. He also would not be allowed to go way above what the assessment's coming at.
That's, that's what I need to be clear about. I'm fine with, uh, what this body wants to do, um, to, to re, to bring it back in next year. Any, uh, suggestions from this body, uh, I'm open for. I'll either vote no on it today.
Give us a chance to do, I think we should leave it open, and if we don't come to a compromise by the next, then do what we have to do.
Well, this means it's gonna be held in recess anyway, right?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna recess today.
Leave this open.
But can I?
I think that's, yeah.
Can I ask Director?
No, that's good by me. So we'll be motion to hold for one week.
So she's gonna go back and talk to him, right?
Hold on. I, I wanna be fair to our director.
Okay.
Do you hon- do you honestly believe, over the course of, from now till next Thursday, is sufficient time for you to deal with this, or does it make more sense for us to allow for a full month and a week or so?
I think it just depends on what council's comfortable with. The language that's in the contract is pretty well outlined. It's already in place. I can send that over so everybody can take a look at it. I know there's a holiday in between here and next Thursday, so, um, I'm comfortable with making it happen and getting all the information. I know, uh, Mr. Ross and Ross Development are happy to work with us as needed. Uh, just realistically, I know we are kind of stuck in this building for now. Whatever we should have done in the past or didn't, we can't change that now, but we can make sure in the future we're following the right direction. And I do think we have to be realistic about the city's current financial situation, how that is. I will go back to Mr. Ross to talk about the terms, to see if we can maybe have a floating end versus the six years that's proposed right now. But, you know, it, it would take time to find new places built, remodel, whatever we need to do, and develop, so we have to be, think of those timelines as we do these negotiations, because we don't wanna have someone holding us under their thumb, so to speak, right?
Chairman, what's your wish?
Okay, so, if this body is comfortable with a lesser term to option to buy, whether it's immediately or two years or four years, I'm comfortable in passing it by the end of the year. We have no other option, so as long as you can come back to us with that option, I'm comfortable with it. So I will vote. Well, they could say no, that's fine, but, uh, you know, we either have to take it up next week or we'll take it up by the end of January, so. We could vote it down today if you're more comfortable with that. What's the rest?
Council, Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilman Wilson?
Still vote no now and still pass it on the next standing committee, I mean, next final vote if we want to.
As long as we keep the meeting open.
It's the same thing. I mean, we can still have, we could reach the same goal, voting it down now versus the recess. I mean, like, we're all in disagreement about what we currently see. Vote it down and then handle it at a final vote. Or not.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you very much. Either way, we have seen, we achieved the same outcome. It's just a different procedure. Uh, the meeting is recessed, the bills that are open are the bills that are open, whether we had, uh, let it sit on the table, whether we voted down, either way, we're gonna take it up on Thursday's, um, uh, uh, regular meeting. Uh, so I don't know that the, the process is as important, uh, as it is to, for me, to, to finish it by year's end. I think with the, with the work that the Director is doing, and we seem to have a reasonable concession from Ross Development, that in good faith, we could leave the bill open, uh, and take it up again Thursday morning. If we find we're still not where we wanna be, then it's a no vote. Thank you.
I'm gonna vote no. We'll vote no and take it up next week.
At our regular meeting. So you wanna call the question?
Call what question?
If you say call the question, we immediately have to vote.
Okay, yeah, call, call the question.
We do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill?
No.
Ms. Gross?
No.
Mr. Kraus?
No.
Mrs. Kelsman?
No.
Ms. Strasburger?
No.
Ms. Warwick?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Levalier?
No.
Eight noes, negative recommendation.
So this will come up for final vote at our regular meeting. We'll need to work with you to have amendments prepared. Thank you, Director, for being here and for all your work.
Yeah.
Uh, so the bill rece, received a negative recommendation. That takes us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have Bill 2330.
Bill 2330, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX zoning, Article 902.03, zoning map by changing from UCE, urban center employment to RMU residential mixed use. Certain properties located on McKee Place and the Fourth Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, known in Allegheny County Office of Deed Registry, as block and lot numbers 28F314, 28F310, 28F308, 28F306, 28F304, and 28F302.
Motion to, uh, send to, to the Planning Commission for report and recommendation.
Second.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It will be sent to the Planning Commission for report recommendation. Our deferred papers, Bill 2275.
Bill 2275, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with common cause consultants in Saseki for the purpose of developing a citywide engagement strategy to support the citywide comprehensive plan process, cost not to exceed $2,645,000 over two years.
Can we read Bill 2276 as well?
Bill 2276, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with HRNA advisors in urban American city for the purpose of assisting in the development of a citywide comprehensive plan, cost not to exceed $3,255,000 over two years.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Question, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we have the director come to the table and where else would like to join?
You probably should have taken I and P first, so it could be done.
Yeah. Those poor suckers.
Make it, uh, 7:00 a.m., everyone can do that.
Karen Abrams, City Planning Director.
Kyle Trinolopli, I'm the city's Chief Economic Development Officer.
Sharonda Watley, Assistant Director of Strategic Planning.
Thank you. So a big discussion here last week, and then we followed up with your department with, um, made sure, I tried to connect with all council members, at least through email, uh, so that my office organized any questions that people may have. And you sent over, um, the memo that I think for me answered, um, you know, the question, the, the main question that I had was, how do, um, cities that have paid for a comprehensive plan, how do they implement that? Like, what, like, I've always heard, we're the only city that doesn't have it. And I'm like, you know, okay, we probably say that a lot about things, you know, but, um, you know, how do they, how do we actually use that once we do it like other cities? And so other cities must have, they must say, hey, this is a great thing. And so, all I wanna do is hear about that. Can you give some highlights on that?
Yes, um, and I have a memo with me, so I'll just pull some points from there.
Yeah, if you could just read off some of those highlights, there would be, or let's, I just wanna skip that on the record as to the question that I had last week.
So I'll just give you some examples, um, that were listed in the memo. So in Washington DC, the companies of plan set in motion the city's first inclusionary zoning policies and related zoning, increasing the production of affordable housing throughout the city, including neighborhoods where housing affordability was not, um, present. Um, additionally, the plan established policies for the role and disposition of publicly owned land to catalyze neighborhood investment, and a man that advocates key citywide and community benefits, um, to benefit goals of NWEBE equity participation, affordable housing, and a man that advocates key citywide and community benefits, um, to benefit goals of NWEBE equity participation, affordable housing, neighborhoods serving, sort of, neighborhoods serving uses as well as developer financial contributions. Um, in Detroit, um, it was an investment with Kueske to collaborate on a local community foundation, um, to establish Motive Daily March, um, an investment fund for financing, supporting local Detroit entrepreneurs. Um, additionally, in Detroit, um, uh, the city partnered with private sector to fund stabilization of neighborhoods experiencing the most chronic challenges due to vacant and abandoned properties. Detroit shares that with Pittsburgh, a lot of vacancy. And there was in Boston, um, imagine Boston 2030, the reprioritization of the city's capital investments in schools, roads, bridges, bike lanes, libraries, et cetera. So, those are some examples that were provided by the consulting teams, um, that had worked on, that, that were proposing here, that have worked on comprehensive plans in the past.
Thank you. And thank you for clearing your schedule to make sure that council can get, um, the answers that they wanted. I know other members, um, so, questions and, um, so, I'm eager to hear those questions being answered as well, but, um, I appreciate you putting that together and, uh, helping my office, you know, relaying that to everyone. So, the, the one thing that I just kind of thought about this recently today, how can we explicitly say, or are you already committed to explicitly saying how the land bank will be, um, a partner in this, in this comprehensive plan? Like, to achieve the goals we need in the comprehensive plan. You know, I don't have to have an answer now for how that will be, because we haven't do the comprehensive plan yet, but will I actually be able to see, like, okay, here's how the, how city, cities like Pittsburgh can utilize their, their land bank? At, at, you know, best possible.
I mean, so, I'll, I'll let the, I'll also let Chief Trinolopoli respond, and Sharon to respond as well, but part of, one of the questions was, how do we, how does a comprehensive plan, um, generate long-term cost savings for the city? So, the optimization of city-owned land was a part of the answer that was provided in this memo. Um, the comprehensive plan provides clear directions within the plan for how to use and dis, and how the use and disposition of city-owned land can address both citywide and community-specific needs, including advancing affordable housing goals. And so, the land bank's purpose was, generally speaking, to provide affordable housing options. But that's just something that we understood. I mean, looking at all of our land collectively and comprehensively and holistically, to figure out what's the best way to dis, to, 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 um, what the best disposition process is for that, and what uses would be necessary. But I will let others expand.
I don't, I don't know that I have anything sort of to add to the director's, you know, comment in terms of, let's say, the, it conceptually, to maybe your broader point or question, Councilman, um, there's the plan itself, and then there's the, the tools and the agencies that we need to sort of enact, you know, and implement them. And, you know, I think the land bank especially, you know, the, the work that we've been doing in partnership with this council and the board to get them to a place where, you know, we are really beginning to sort of understand and then realize that promise, um, will be a critical tool in helping us to realize that, especially when we're talking about some of those neighborhood-scale projects that, you know, really haven't, been a good fit for the URA's disposition, or, you know, the city's disposition all the time, so.
Okay, good. I just, I just want to hear the commitment. I'm not, I don't want to be long-winded about this. Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, dating back to last week, I had to have a comprehensive plan. I agree with that to a certain extent. I've not seen much success out of plans, to be honest with you. What I see is, you have them, they're good for trying to support or collect or grant money, or whatever it might be. It's kind of like a priority, you have to have them. But, it was the price tag, and, and it was the timing, quite frankly. You know, here we are spending $700 million or so, and, uh, you know, we got so much on our plate, and, and it was the, the price tag. But more so than the price tag with me, it was the one element of the public engagement. Now, has there been any amendments to that? Have you thought about that? I think it was like 1.3 million towards public engagement, is that right?
Well, I, I, there was probably, um, like a nuanced issue with the way the, the question was responded to. So, we do have consultants, subconsultants, who are nonprofit, some, two of them are, well, one's nonprofit, two of them are independent consultants, who I think there's interpretation around community or residents, because they are residents and they live in the city. Um, but there was a, an opportunity for us to really engage with residents on the ground, who we rarely get an opportunity to engage with. Um, so there is an, an opportunity to have touchpoints, because the City Planning Department, people work, there's a system that we do have, and people, you know, they feed into it, because they know that it exists. Many, many, many more people don't know that we exist, in the ways that, that we do. So, people who don't speak English, for example, um, there's an accessibility issue, whether it's accessing, accessing, um, accessing our meetings online. Some people do not have internet connections, don't have computers, and we do have public meetings, so people just can't get there physically. Um, we have people who are returning, you know, citizens from being incarcerated, who, you know, we don't, we don't have any connection to, and young people. Um, so there are costs associated with that. Um, our department does not have that reach, um, and we really do need professionals to, to actually do that.
So, did I see a list as to, um, did you already select the nonprofits that are going to help us?
No, no, no. We haven't, yeah, we, and to be really clear, we haven't discussed the deliverables, because we wanted to get to this point, or beyond this point. Um, there was a, there was, there were proposals that were presented to us, deliverables that were suggested, dependent upon, obviously, our RFP. We have a 26, um, deliverables that we're looking for in the plan. We have not yet negotiated that, so that is.
So, we have not selected one person, one organization, that we're going to use for the public engagement as of yet?
Well, I, I just want to make sure that we're sort of clear on what you're, what you're referencing, Councilman. There's the consultants that'll be, you know, guiding the work and working in tandem with the team at, um, the City Planning Department. Just what you're referencing is around what was mentioned last week, like the mini-grants and some of those things that'll be neighborhood-specific. Those have not been selected.
Okay, so the consultants have been chosen.
Yes.
And that is coming out of the 1.3 million for the public engagement.
That, that's, that's the two bills before you. 2275 and 2276 are to enter into contracts with this chosen consultant.
And they're going to help us what?
I'll, I'll let the Director and Assistant Director speak to the scope.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into it. So, I can just read off some of the deliverables that come out of the engagement, but they're also connected to the technical services as well, because you, we can't have one without the other. Um, so, there will be, um, just engagement activities. So, plan and execute both traditional and non-traditional engagement activities in collaboration with city staff. So, we will be involved with that. Neighborhood Services will be involved in that as well. Um, the, the city is open to any and all creative and innovative engagement strategies, which are accessible, including childcare, because some people just are not on our city planning schedules, or even their RCO meeting schedules. Um, translation services, interpretive services, and visual aids, and other requirements that we may put in place to make the meetings more accessible. Um, we actually are, we're asking for community-driven accountability metrics. We want to make sure that we are actually measuring ourselves based upon what the recommendations are, and we really do feel that, excuse me, that, that, you know, we need to have community engagements that, and community recommendations about how those metrics and measurements are placed. Um, just the number of, we have a speaker series, because there are about 20 topic areas that there may be an interest in people understanding them. For example, there's climate-related issues, there's urban planning, there's, I mean, urban design, I'm sorry, there's public health. So, there are a number of topic areas that there.
Okay. Let me, uh, let me just kind of cut to the chase. The, um, so, so there are going to be mini-grants, we're going to hire individuals as well, no?
No, that's not, no. I think we're high.
So, this is all nonprofits to help us reach out to the community and engage with the community?
Right.
Now, let me just ask you this off the top of your head. I saw a partial, part of that list, but, um, here's what you create when you do that, for me, anyway. Are any of those nonprofits in my neighborhoods, in my district?
I, I would imagine so. I mean, we are imagining.
I'm imagining that, I don't have to be honest with you.
The engagement team has a 90-neighborhood strategy, so the scale is all 90 neighborhoods. So, at least one organization, if not more.
I didn't see any on there.
Well, we don't have, we didn't, we haven't, again, we haven't gone over the deliverables yet. We haven't, because part of it is to create an engagement plan.
But I did see a list with some of the, One Hood was in there.
They're, they're subconsultants, so.
Okay, so what are we paying them out of? We're having them as a subconsultant?
They're organizing, some of them hard-to-reach topical areas.
But they're not coming out of the public engagement?
Yes, they're part of the public engagement team. But they're more topical, they're topic-oriented, so we don't have a lot of youth engagement. We have no youth engagement at all from a city planning perspective, or really most departments, other than probably city parks and neighborhood services. So, we need to have a real serious youth engagement. Um, there is a, um, the Brown Mamas is a group that has outreach to black and brown mothers in the city, because those demographics are the ones who are actually not very fair, fairing as well as others in our, in our community. We have, um, we have an environmental and climate justice engagement person, who's really looking at the just transition and the, and the actual, you know, racial justice and climate justice aspects of it. And they have their, and then within Common Cause consultants, there are people within that organization who have outreach. So, we have outreach to Jewish community, we have outreach to other, to some Latino-speaking community groups. So, within that firm itself, there are tentacles that reach out to other communities, but she did not have, um, that so specific things in, in her firm.
Let me sum it up for me, and then I'll move on. We can move on to other members. Um, of the public engagement, what is it, 1.3 million? Is that somewhere in, in the right ballpark?
Of the public engagement, because some of it's going to some technology as well, so I think maybe less than a third of it is actually going to community groups. I can double-check that for you, but it was, it's not half. It's significantly less than that.
So, so it's not half?
The total, yeah, the, the total contract in 2275 is 2.6 million.
Right.
Correct.
And that's for public engagement?
Correct.
Right. And that includes the One Hood, the Brown Mamas, and everybody else that's in there?
Right, and Saseki, um, and Grayscale. So, there are two other firms that are part of that.
So, how much of that money is going to those groups you've already identified, and how much is still left out there?
We don't know yet. We're still in the process of figuring.
I saw prices next to them. I saw like 300,000 going here, 200,000 going there.
That was.
I think we're, I think we're talking past each other a bit.
We might be. I'm sorry.
There's, there's. Yeah. There's the consultant team, of which One Hood, Brown Mamas, Alyssa Lyon, Grayscale, Saseki, and Common Cause, um, are the team. And then there's an amount that's set aside for the, um, small-scale community, you know, grants, which is an amount that would go, you know, to nonprofits within the communities, right? Like, so, the list that you saw wouldn't have been inclusive of those that'll be a result of the mini-grants. So, that's, that's, I just want to make sure that we're being clear sort of on that.
Yeah, but all coming from the 2.6 million.
Correct.
Yes.
Right, right. Okay, well, um, of what I see here, there's nothing in my district, I will tell you. But that's, okay.
There's nothing listed for any district, so.
Well, I guess they're not district-specific, but.
Right, they're not district-specific.
There's no organizations here from my side of the charts.
But in, there's a 90-neighborhood strategy, which would provide mini-grants to every single neighborhood and then, and a community organization, or two, depending upon, obviously, the size, that will go to every neighborhood. So, your neighborhood will see funding, um, for it from neighborhood groups. RCOs, neighborhood groups, yes.
My, my main problem with this whole bill was the public engagement, and the amount of money we're spending on public engagement. I get it. It's good to pay people, because they're on the payroll now, and we could tell them what to do versus volunteers. But, it's just a steep price tag, and I feel like there's room for unpropriety there, you know, um, in a way of, you know, I mean, if, 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 if these, the rest of the contracts are given out, I'll be looking closely for my district, I will tell you. You know, who's on the payroll and who's not, just like I do with everything in the city of Pittsburgh. So, so I just hate to even have to go down that road and that battle. I wish there was another way we could do the public engagement without paying people. Okay, that's it from you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McGross?
Thank you, appreciate it. I think I said last week that I have sticker shock, right? Um, and I had my staff continue to look around our benchmark cities for anything that was comparable price tags. And I continue, I mean, last week, we talked about how Chicago has nine times the population, and their plan was only $4 million. I think that can, the response was that, well, Chicago's plan, you know, was, you know, they'd done one recently, and so it's less for process, but my staff says they haven't had a comprehensive plan in 60 years. Um, so that's not what we're seeing, that it, that it is, it was, you know, as, as heavy of a lift as we have. Um, again, I'll just reiterate from last week that the population of St. Paul, Minnesota, for example, is 300,000, which is comparable to the city of Pittsburgh, and their cost for consultants was zero, because they did the comprehensive plan in-house. That, you know, Scranton, for example, has a population a third of the size of the city of Pittsburgh, and that their plan was about $300,000 for consultants. We've got Minneapolis, a population of about 425,000 people, also in-house, zero for consulting. Um, Nashville, population of 692,000, zero for consulting. Indianapolis, again, I, these are, we have 14 benchmark cities, and for 20-some years, we've been comparing ourselves to these cities. So, I have my staff track. When we want comparisons, we use these cities, whether it's on policing, whether it's on ARPA allocations. Indianapolis, a population of about 882,000, um, zero on consulting. Cleveland, um, looks actually a little bit closer to the city proper, was about, is 368,000 people or so. Gosh, you know, they're almost, almost at 3.5 million total. So, yeah, that was heavy on consulting, but it's half of the price that you're asking us to pay. Cincinnati, population of 300,000, about 2 million. So, um, I, I understand that you want $6 million of consulting. I don't think you need $6 million of consulting, and I don't think this council should pay $6 million worth of consulting. I think you should do a comprehensive plan with less money on consultants. Um, so, and I, we can't find a city that has spent $6 million on consulting. Um, so these contracts are just too big. Thank you for the very long memo over the weekend. I think it reiterates a lot of what was said at the table last week, so there's really no, um, to me, um, no additional information that we didn't cover last week. I noticed here that it talks about silos between departments, but we asked you point-blank in a briefing whether, you know, PWSA as an authority has to follow our comprehensive plan, and the answer was no. Point-blank. Does the URA have to follow our comprehensive plan? No. Does the SEA have to follow our comprehensive plan? No. Um, so, it might, you know, we can, we can keep our fingers crossed that it would break down the silos. But it's not a legal tool, um, to do so, so that doesn't really justify the cost to me. I read the state statute on the requirements, because I, it's not that I'm a, I want us to do a comprehensive plan. I, I, for all of the reasons we think comprehensive plans are great, I think they're great as well. But, you know, not that I'm recommending this, but state law says something like, write the plan and then have a public hearing. Um, not that I'm recommending it. We should definitely talk to our residents more than that. We should definitely do outreach more than that. But do, do we need the Lamborghini of community outreach, um, in this budget? I, I don't think so. I think we can do a, a really good job, uh, without the 2.5 million dollars worth of just comms and outreach, and then the 3.5 million, which is separate, which is the, uh, cost for the kind of writing. I think we asked if it included implementation, and the answer was no. Um, so, the other cities have these costs built in. Um, and if we're looking at just a two-year contract, firstly, we've had conversations about the bills. I think we complained last year when we allocated the 2, $2 million or so into the 2023 budget, which is all actually that's presently allocated. You know, we've had briefings about it, we've said that we had some questions. Um, and now, to have this discussion in December, when we have eight-hour council meetings like last week, we dedicated a full hour of last week's discussion, um, and now we're dedicating. And now we're dedicating probably more than, it's been half an hour so far and I could probably go on for another half an hour if we really, really want to have the conversation. Or we have this conversation in January. This is not a case where there's a lease that's ending in three weeks or six weeks. This is not a case where this is a contract that we've had for three years and it's about to expire and we need to continue it and we complain about those. This is, we're about to embark on a really big project, right? That, again, I think we need to do. And so we should be having this discussion in January, frankly, and not in the middle of budget season when I don't feel like we're giving it our best attention. I don't think the public is giving it its best attention. And so I, I would like to continue the conversation. I didn't ask any questions, but that's fine, Mr. Chair. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I just, thank you, Councilwoman, for really leading the discussion in, in a really strong way. You make a really great case as to why we should wait until the new year. I just, I think that I'm never going to vote for something, giving additional grant funding out. We are doing that way too much and we cannot afford what we have to take care of and our responsibility is here in the city of Pittsburgh. I think just it was last week I'm trying to scrap, scrape together funding for an elevator that's been broken in our building or that needs repaired. We struggle to get funding for our staff members and for people over here. And when we do it, it looks like we're taking so much from the city, but meanwhile, we're handing money over in the millions in terms of grants, in the millions, and it's, and with almost no accountability or very little accountability. And it's very concerning to me. So I am never going to vote for that. I'm also never going to vote for anybody to come into my district and start working with our people. That's what we were elected to do. That's what our staff members can do. And I think that, that really, there's, I, I'm trying to understand why your city planners don't have the ability to do something like this, the in-house. And why, if, if they don't have that ability, why are we hiring people to be planners that can't do this kind of work? Do you want to answer that?
Certainly.
Because I want to give them a fair chance. I don't want to say something that, you know, I wonder why we're not hiring people like that.
So our planners are generalists, so they don't have expertise in a lot of the areas that we're looking at. So we do need consultants to help out with that. They do general city planning, but we're looking deeply into things like public health, deeply into things like, are there other examples that we can give out? Urban design, we're thinking deeply about some things. So some things they could cover, others they couldn't. It would take probably a very long time for our planning department to put together a comprehensive plan.
And how long are you anticipating this to take?
This is two, this is two years.
This is two years. And how long do you think they would need, your planners?
They would probably, if, I mean, depending upon, if we're still continuing to do our planning work on top of a comprehensive plan, maybe five to seven years, which would mean that we'd have old data after probably years four or five and have to recast the data. It would take a very long time for us to get this done.
So that's maybe four, five years.
And, right.
A lot less money.
Right, for, I mean, I think.
A lot less money. Because they're already on staff.
And they would, it would definitely slow down the services that we provide.
Well, that might be a plus in my, in my case. Don't tell me that too much.
It would slow down a lot of the things that we do for residents in the city if we did, if we did it in-house, which is why.
I would like a list of what you think that would slow down. I, I'm curious. I don't want to put you on the spot now.
I mean.
My idea, look, I think the world of you, I think I have a lot of respect for you. I just really disagree with this plan, absolutely disagree with it. And I think because if we had money, if we had money now, I would think it would be great to do something like this. But we don't have money and we're also in a city with, you know, amazing universities. And I think we don't use them enough and a lot of them do comprehensive plans. I don't think we use them enough in ways that they could help with something like this. And some actually do have comprehensive plans. And, and I think if we would work with them to get what we wanted, we would be in a, we would make sure that we were doing, they were doing the job that we really want. But I'm just, I, I really don't have any more questions. I'm just going to say I can't vote for anything that's handing out additional grant money. I can't vote for something with this price tag on at this time because we are struggling financially. We're trying to put money back into the budget for things. I mean, we're going through, you know, trust funds, trying to scrape together money to put it back into the general fund to do the things we're supposed to be doing. So I have a lot of issues. And I actually think if the URA is involved, we've given an awful lot of money to the URA, I mean, you could certainly pay for it too. So I just think for, right now for me, I'm just not comfortable. So, thank you. And I'm, I'm sorry, I wish I could be, but I'm not.
Thank you. Anyone else first round? Councilwoman Schlossberger? I mean. Warwick, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's.
I did that today too.
Long day, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I guess I'm a little concerned that we're moving toward not doing a plan and we need to do a comprehensive plan. That's, so I, I, I mean, what, what are members, and I, and I understand the concern. So what are members' thoughts about just reevaluating this next year, maybe looking at ways that we can incorporate city planners, I don't know, neighborhood services, our teams? Maybe there's grant money that could, that could help fund this to get the, the better plan?
I think members are open to that discussion, if you don't mind me saying.
Right, but, yeah, so, so ways, but, but I mean, Director, I, I feel like we would need to give the Director time to, I mean, you can't make these decisions right now at the table or before the end of the year. Like, if there were ways to scale this down or reevaluate to a place where members feel more comfortable. I guess I'm asking all of you. I don't know, Director, if you have thoughts on that? Okay. I, I'll just leave it at that. That's just what I wanted to, to put out there.
I did answer that. I think that we are all open to that, that conversation. I think we want to, I think we're in agreement to hold.
Mr. Chair, when I vote, is that?
Councilwoman Warwick still has the floor. Then Councilwoman Schlossberger, did I come to you, Councilman?
I know he's at an event, so I'll let Councilwoman Cross speak first and I'll go after him.
Councilwoman Cross?
No, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. And I apologize, I've been kind of in and out in a, Senator Hawke said I were touring the Belt and the Road with many of you know, the project there during my term. And we're looking to close the financial gap there as well. I think, you know, my conversation with members, and, and I was provoked to speak after Councilwoman Warwick, that I, I don't believe up here that members don't believe we should have comprehensive plan. I do believe members are clearly concerned at the cost, especially those that experienced the lean years of 47 and making certain that we don't ever go back there again. And, and I, I just, I kind of want to reinforce the Councilwoman's remarks. If we're concerned that we, it sounds like we're going down the road, that we don't find a plan, I don't believe that to be the case. I believe it is the timing and the funding of the project. And if I, and please help me to understand, because I'm kind of a business manager, but I think what I'm hearing members offer is they feel better about not rushing this and taking this up in early January and giving it its due diligence or other possible sources of funding that could actually accomplish this plan. Is, is that why I'm hearing, Mr. Chair?
You've heard that from some members, yes.
Okay, that's, appreciate your help.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schlossberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I mean, you all heard me last week speak strongly in favor of this plan. I'm ready to vote it as is today. And I, you know, there's so much that I can say for, you know, feeling as if there is, you know, a, a strong need for including expertise outside of city planning so that we can reach the, 30,000 people is a, is a big task. We've never, I don't, I've never seen us attempt that or do that before. And we will certainly need the work of nonprofit organizations embedded in the community to, who I believe need to be paid for their, for their work and their labor, whether that's going door-to-door, whether that's, you know, just, you know, purely like their email lists and the data that they have on people that they have access to, language services, all of that. So I, I'm, I'm in support of this and I understand that there is, you know, a desire to, to get going as soon as possible. I certainly want to. Because we're going down the path of talking about it, I wanted to ask Director Abrams, what would be the impact to you and to those that you've already, are already kind of, you know, discussing, being under contract with any subs? If we were to hold the bill and then have it be reintroduced first thing in January, would there be an impact to you?
I'm not certain about that. It's one of those sooner the better situations. I'm not sure what the timeframe would be on that. If it's January, that probably makes sense, but we are holding a lot of things up in the air around it. So the earlier the better, that's, that's the impact that it would have. Because we're basically waiting to start this. We're very eager to begin this.
Sure.
So it would, it would definitely impact us.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, like I said, I'm ready to go today. That said, I, I think that what I'm hearing from majority, maybe not all members, majority of members, is that we want a plan and we're just not in agreement as to how much to spend or where to spend or how best to put this together. I think it, it's imperative that we as council send a strong statement to our constituency and to our residents that we're ready for this and that, you know, we're voting as a block in favor of this, if not, you know, 9-0, then something close to that. And it doesn't feel like we're there today. And so I want to, out of respect for my council members, you know, I'll go along with hold and getting, and actually doing some work and digging in so that we can demonstrate strong support for this and, you know, really moving forward in earnest first thing January. I don't want this to stretch into mid or late January or February. Like, we need to get this going, but I respect my council colleagues and we'll, we'll move with the body to make sure that we can, you know, do the work to get everyone on board with the details here.
Before moving on to second round with Councilman Coghill and Councilman Wilson, my two cents are, one, I'm assuming, and I don't know this for a fact, I'm making an assumption, Councilwoman, that the cities that were able to do much more of the comprehensive planning in-house had a much more robust planning department than what we have. With all due respect to the wonderful planners that we have, I work with them weekly, they do not have the capacity to do this in-house. Unfortunately, 10 years ago, the Hill District, this is one example, did a master plan. The city created definitions on how they adopt master plans and they created, as you all know this, they create a whole structure, right? So we've been spending two and a half years now trying to update the Hill District master plan so it can be accepted and adopted by the city. That's just one neighborhood. And it's cost us well over half a million dollars to do so. Similarly, I've got a neighborhood next door to the Hill District in Oakland that also has a master plan that was created and spent well over a couple of years working on, well over a half a million dollars delivering. And ironically, the Hill District neighborhood that sits directly next to the Hill, to Oakland master plan, the two don't talk to one another, right? So they're done in isolation. And neither of those plans also speak to the environmental concerns that are happening within the community. They don't speak to the millions of deer that are running through the community that we're beginning to shoot, whether you like that or not. Huh? They don't, they, yes, my son was astonished as we were driving down the boulevard two nights ago, there were a million crows just sitting in the trees. So no, it doesn't speak to the, so there's a lot of things that these plans that we're doing don't bring together as a city, which is why we need a comprehensive plan. And if we wanted to not rely on consultants, then we would need to be able to say, cool, we don't want consultants, we probably need to put $2 million into our planning department in order to get the expertise to be able to expeditionally, to get through, that too, to get through the planning process. And in doing a comprehensive plan, it took two years versus using our current staff to do a, update a Hill District plan, that's also taking two years, right? So we're not, we're not able to compare apples to apples, which is why we need the consultants. Now, how much of that should be paid for door-to-door outreach? Sure, Councilwoman Schlossberger, I'm sure we can all debate that and have a healthy conversation about that. If members need to take some time so as to dig into the numbers and figure that out, okay, I can buy into that. But I'm, I'm a merely suggest, yes, we need a comprehensive plan to help. And I'll always argue this should also be guiding our budget, right? I've, I've said this numerous times, that the plan should be a guide for how we actually budget for the next 10 years or longer. But we do not have the capacity to do this in-house. I just wanted to sort of make that point. So I've got three. You want to respond to me?
Just general response to some of the prompts, if that's okay?
To some of the?
To some of the comments that I've heard around the table.
Sure.
Thank you. So I most recently was with the city of Cleveland. They had done their comprehensive plan just before I started. They did do theirs in-house and it did take them five years to do. They did not have the budget that we are asking for and they did not have the full expertise on all of the 19 different topic areas that we are asking for. And so I would pose to this body that we take a look at some of the examples that are being offered up today. Each community and each city is different, so each priority list is different. And so we are talking about 19 different topics. Those different cities may have only focused on eight items or eight topics for planning. And so we want to make sure that we do actually have an apples-to-apples comparison. And then also, I have, there is a great staff in DCP, but we do not have the expertise in all 19 of those topic areas. And particularly, we do not have the expertise on how to integrate them in solution-based scenarios for the city of Pittsburgh. And so the consultant teams that we have selected through a very robust process are the best and the brightest. And so we are bringing that to you all today, or maybe in the future, in hopes that you all really receive what they are offering and really receive what the strategy that we're trying to put together to conduct the city-wide comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Director Abrams, you want to respond?
I can't respond myself. Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to actually say that we did request implementation strategies for this plan. So that was definitely included in the deliverables that we asked for. We also asked for potential funding sources as a response to what we were going to see in the plan. So there is a way for us to actually pay it forward to some extent. So the plan is really an investment in how we actually have additional investment into the city. So this team of teams is pulling together potential implementation strategies for us. Yes, there is marketing, but that is a way for people to be aware of the plan. I just wanted to just make sure that I put that out there.
Thank you. Second round, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So last week, I asked for me to be able to vote for this. The public engagement I thought was too high a price tag. You all are not budging on that from my perspective, correct?
I'm not saying that we're not budging on it. I think I want to look at our approach in more detail. And I'm happy to talk to you about the actual engagement approach. And we can discuss what we need to discuss around the funding of it.
So for me to support that, you know, I would want to know, what Common Cause is doing for $500,000? What is their outreach? What makes them better than our own planning department here? What skills do they bring to the table? What is One Hood doing? You know, I, I, do we know? Do we have a description from them as to what we expect out of them?
Yes, we do. I mean, and again, I want to be really very clear. We have not pinned down the deliverables that we're putting to the proposal.
Of course not, because we don't approve them yet, right?
Right, we haven't gotten to that point yet. And everything at this point, well, most, some things are up for discussion. We're going to have to discuss some things. We did go through, again, we went through a rigorous, I would say, proposal process. We had a three, we had three pre-bid meetings. We had a screening, we had interviews. So we did do all of our due diligence.
So the groups that we've selected on this sheet, we're selecting them because we know their marketing and outreach prowess, is that it?
I would say in part, but to, to the Director's point, like, they submitted proposals, right? And they were evaluated on the basis of the proposals, what was in their alignment with what the, you know, team had put forth in the RFP itself to solicit that and then, you know, sort of confidence in, in, I would say, the way in which they would drive it forward and then be able to deliver it on a time. So certainly their prowess, references, et cetera, fit into that. But that's, you know, all of the proposals we received. But that's, you know, all of the proposals we received, I think, you know, I can speak for Director Abrams and Assistant Director Watley, we were impressed with what came forward for it. We felt that, you know, the two pieces of legislation you see before you with the consultant teams that are on there were the best sort of qualified in one sense, and then most thoughtful in the proposals they put forth to drive the plan ahead.
Yes, I would need to see, you know. I'd like to see what their intentions are. Are they going to knock on doors? Are they going to put flyers out? Are they going to pay professional consultants? I have no idea what they're going to do with that money. I just feel like the price tag is heavy, and I felt this was the best area to trim it. Not only is it good for optics' sakes, I feel, but, you know, nonprofits, you know, why aren't they offering the delivery services for the good of the city? Why are we paying them? You know, they're funded by many, many people, foundations, City of Pittsburgh. So, why are we choosing to pay for their services? And I'm not asking you to answer that question. But if we are choosing to pay for their services, I want to know what their services are. What exactly does it entail, you know? So, I'll be glad to take this up next year. I think it's a good time. I think we can all come to consensus. I agree with, I forget, you know, who said it, probably everybody here said it, that it's good to have a comprehensive plan. And I think we'll get there, but not at this price tag. And, you know, I hope we could all come to agreement early next year. That's it. Thanks.
Councilwoman Wilson?
So, as the chair, I can make the motion to hold. And then, this will have to be reintroduced next year, both bills. But I think before we get there, I want to really make sure, I want to make sure that we're having, like, the whole discussion here has got to be, you know, what members want and everything has to be structured in a way where we get somewhere. So, I'm willing to organize that, that we agree upon how we organize and structure how we get to somewhere. Because, you know, I just don't want it to be pieced up, we're all each individually reaching out and trying to figure this out just on our own, and then we have the same discussion back here at the table. So, I want to get somewhere. If we're all in agreement that we need to do this, then, you know, I think we should all be a part of that process getting somewhere. So, whenever the hold has to happen, I'm happy to make the hold.
Madam President?
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, again, I'm going to say again, I just think for me, when you're talking about our staff not having capacity and city planning, and we've been talking about this being so important for so long, maybe it's time to reevaluate the staff and the capacity that they have. Because if this is something that's so important, that's been so important, and you know it's so important, and you knew it was coming, then we should be reevaluating or hiring people with those capacities, with that type of skill. I just, I think that we've, you've gotten a lot of positions in city planning, I think, over the past, you know, two years. So, it would be great to have somebody with that capacity to focus just on this kind of stuff. And the other part for me is still, I continue to hear the comments about doing organizing. I can tell you, one of the things I did before I got here, a lot of people don't know all the stuff I did before I got, but one of the things I did was, I was a really great organizer in the City of Pittsburgh. I had meetings in Garfield where they told me I would have four people show up, I'd get 45. I had the largest rally in the state of Pennsylvania with Mark Brantley for Public Education. I organized that in two months. I organized so many different things. I'm trying to think of all the things we've done over the years, just organizing. And we did it for free. And all the people that came and got involved also did it for free. They did it because they cared. It was making people understand how important it was to them, to their families, to their kids. It was a little bit of, you know, time and educating people on what was important. We didn't have to pay people to get involved. We didn't have to pay people to do things. Now, I will say there was a cost, maybe you'd have to have dinner or childcare or something. But we'd always worked with people in the community. And one of the people that was amazing at organizing in the North Side was Keith Murphy and at the Bethany House. He's moved now, he's, I think, in McKeesport or something. But he would give people in note, just doing almost absolutely, just making phone calls and nothing, nothing more. But, so I have a lot of concern when you, I think you're trying to pay the people you want to come to say what you want them to say instead of paying people, instead of just inviting people. Well, you can say, I've worked with Pittsburgh Public Schools before this, I know the games, I know the consult, what they do when they hire consultants, and I've been here for a long time, and I know what happens. I'm not naive. I'm not somebody who's going to just say, yes, I'm, you know, all for this plan and think that it's, I know that there's agendas and there's things that you want to accomplish as well, and the administration might want to accomplish. I'm not saying I disagree with those things, I'm just saying I disagree with our approach. And so, for me, I'm willing to go, and I think council members would be willing to go into their communities and get some feedback and some people attending meetings. But I'm not going to pull them into a meeting just for agendas that I'm unfamiliar with. So, I just want to say that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
All right. Yeah, so I, I mean, the comments from Councilperson Strasburger, you know, are clear and makes sense to me that, yeah, this is definitely something that we should at least strive to be nine oh. Maybe only, we might only get to eight to one, but super majority would be, you know, the best possible way. So, motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
Hold those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill will be held two weeks. That takes us to Recreation, Youth and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. Our first bill, 1980.
Bill 1980, Resolution repealing resolution 428 of 2023, effective July 9, 2023, entitled "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Homewood Community Sports for Community Liaison Services at an Amount Not to Exceed $300,000 by repealing it in its entirety."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, brief discussion.
Madam President?
I just want to say that I think that since we held this bill, and since we've been trying to work on this, but we have been trying to find a solution. And last week, we were told that we would get something from Law Department. And I, and I want to say this, preface this by saying, I know they are extremely busy right now with a lot of multiple things going on at the same time. And, but this was something that we were told last week, we would have an opinion from Law. We were told we would have something in writing about the agreement with the foundation and that they were agreeable to some of the stuff. So, we don't have anything in writing. We don't have anything that we've been waiting for. But I think it's, council's intent is that we like the idea of working toward getting something done in a legal way that we feel comfortable with and that the Law Department does absolutely approve. So, I think even though we'll repeal this today, we would like to take time next year. Councilman Lavelle and I were just talking about maybe putting something in place next year, working with the administration to hopefully accomplish what they want to accomplish, but in, with a legal path forward so that we're not in a situation, they're not in any kind of situation. And I think that everybody wants to help fund this group and these, and this, and do the project that they want done. But I think it's, right now, we've given it so much time to try to get to that place. So, I think since we didn't receive any of that information, we'll work with, you know, together with the administration, hopefully for next year. Are you here for this? Okay. Well, I think we're going to repeal it. That's okay. Thank you. Because what we need is in writing. You don't have anything in writing. That's okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
What, do you want to call them to the table?
Yeah.
Well, I figured you did.
Want to invite them to the?
But it wasn't the conversation you had in my office, so that's why I didn't know. Okay.
Please come to the table.
And then I'm going to ask questions. You opened it up. So, I'm second. Thank you. Do you want to come to the table? I'll call you.
Jesse Exless, Deputy City Solicitor. Taking Councilwoman Kelsmith's comments in mind, I think, so the issue of the delay is like, there are just like more issues that we have to review in order to give something in writing.
I got the, yeah, thanks. Can you just, both of you introduce yourselves?
And I'm Lisa Frank. I'm the City's Chief Operating Administrative Officer.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I know she asked questions, but I have, I just wanted to tailor the conversation, we have the floor. So, okay. Yes, I understand. I've been given information by the emails that were sent and then also discussions about what's happening here. And I wanted to just understand more clearly what I'm seeing on the email was not what was requested by council. So, can you explain why that is?
I don't know anything about an email. What I can say is that...
No, 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 we got, we got an email.
He's referring to an email Solicitor Friesen sent out to all members that had the contracts as we've seen them, the agreement with, is it RK? Hines, thank you, Hines, as we've seen them. So, it was all the information that he had on the topic. It wasn't what was requested of the administration that last week.
So, it was, I, I'm going to let Jesse speak about the, what was relayed to me was that there were two important things. One was a letter that went from the Hines to Homewood Community Sports essentially saying, we're fine with this spending plan if you spend within your mission. And then there was a legal request. On the letter, I took that very seriously. I'm trying to raise Rob Stephanie. I don't know if he's gone for the holidays or what the story is. But I did see a draft of the letter. I'm absolutely confident and can let you know that it exists and it is directly from Rob at the Hines Foundation to Mubarak is mainly saying that if you are spending funds within your mission to help kids learn how to take care of this field, to help them learn how to become gentlemen, or if they're cheerleaders, gentle women, that they are fine with that. And I'd very much like to have an opportunity to get that letter to you because I think it's important. We did enter into a contract. It's, it is, as you say, Councilwoman, it's a, it's a sort of beautiful thing for the city to be doing on an important field. And just as a, as a, I don't know, as a, I don't, a few more days patience, and I think we can get there because I'm confident these documents exist. I will let you speak about the legal opinion.
So, I apologize in advance, I'm not the attorney who was handling specifically the request, but from what I understand is that for the waiver, at least, request, there might be some inconsistency. So, we're trying to review everything to then provide a recommendation as to how to move forward within the legal parameters.
My thing with this is I've been, understand there's not a field yet. So, why would we fund this now without a field?
I didn't hear the last part you said.
The field, and the whole program is to teach youth how to, you know, do maintenance on a football field? Not familiar exactly what kind of field it is, but the field doesn't currently exist. And we're like, is there, like, what is the reason for that?
So, from what I understand is the granting we got, the grant we received was to build the field and do other activities in order to get that field going. So, this request was a part of that, as in, once that field gets put together, this would also help with the maintenance of like having the field engineering, stuff like that.
I'm just saying, like, could this be more in line with the timeline of whenever that field's built?
Yeah, I think, and the timeline on this field, like many of the things that we're building, is quite long. This is, this community organization has been engaged with us for the seven, I think, seven years now. They're excited. The Steelers are excited. The kids are excited to learn. And so, we thought, you know, let's just, we have the intention from the Hines to do the community engagement, and so we, and the money's there to execute the contract and let them get started to the extent they can. They can visit the Steelers, they can learn about high-performance natural turf. They can get going in the ways that they can get going. So, you know, I think the answer to your why question was sort of like, you know, why not?
I wasn't aware. I guess I thought this was all related to a field that had to be built.
And it will be eventually. And I think we are, we did the demo in the fall, and we, I think the last of the permits are getting finished up for the actual construction to begin in the spring. And there is a, you know, cross-your-fingers kind of hope that maybe towards the end of the football season, these kids could actually be on the field.
Okay. And then what, what funds will be required now to get this, to get this going? Like, would the full 300 have to be paid, or is there actual?
Well, we've, we've accepted the funding from the Hines. It's, I'm not sure I answered, understand your question. The funding is there. We accepted it.
So, yeah, it's like, we got a grant from Hines, and then this agreement would be direct some of those funds to HC, to the ACS. Does that make sense?
Okay. How much is coming from Hines?
A tot, oh, sorry, a total of $2 million.
Total of $2 million. And how much city funds?
For the entirety of the field?
No, for the program.
For this, for this program, none. This is all paid out of the Hines contribution.
All right, thanks.
Councilwoman Strasburger? I'm so, the second time I've done that, sorry. Councilwoman, I'm looking at Councilwoman Warwick, and I called Councilwoman Strasburger. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Warwick?
I mean, I don't think I have any further questions now that you all are at the table. Good. Thanks.
Anyone else first round?
Yeah. Yeah, me.
Second round, Madam President?
Yeah, so, I just want to be very clear. I think we have been trying so hard, and maybe I should have called you from the beginning because we probably maybe have, would have the information we need. But we have been trying so hard to try to make sure that this happened and to get the inform, all we've asked for from the, from the very beginning was the information we asked for last week, and we're told last week again, for the second time, that we would have the information. So, it makes it kind of hard to say, okay, we're going to wait because by next week, we'll have it.
I, I apologize for that, and I could be more communicative myself. The first I heard of it was last week. I, all I can say is I jumped on it right away, and I am trying to get, get a copy of that letter to you.
Thank you. I just, I think we have to talk about, if we're going to recess this meeting, we can take time and talk about it for the, but I think of before, if we don't get anything by the 28th, then we just go through with the repeal.
So, I know, just for your verification, I know she's talking to members, we have other bills that are open on the table. We're going to recess and resume next week. And so, what Madam President, I think is suggesting is that if you, we have at least one more meeting whereby the information could come forward before we have to act one way or the other.
And then we repeal it if we don't get it by then, for sure.
If the information's not here by...
Does everybody agree with that?
The 28th, then council with that point will repeal, and we start the process over next year.
Okay. I forgive you, Bobby, for calling people to the table. Yes, I forgive you for calling people to the table.
So, we're leaving that open on the table. So, that will take us to Bill 2133.
Bill 2133, Resolution Authorizing Naming the Unnamed Pavilion in Westin Park to the Steve Beshnik Pavilion.
Second. Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? And lastly, Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Warwick, we have one supplemental paper, Bill 2301.
Bill 2301, Resolution Amending Resolution 615 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Esri, granting uncapped citywide access to Esri's products, including Arc GIS velocity for all departments. This will allow the city to build and maintain an authoritative system of record. Expanding access to this system of record will enable the city to make data-driven decisions, share information across departments, and perform advanced analytics. It will also share information with the public, meaning the needs of the City of Pittsburgh, by increasing the approved amount by $250,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,150,000 over four years.
So, first I need to make a motion for a verbal amendment.
It's motion to approve.
Oh, so, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. And so, he, and I think there was some confusion around this because there is actually a typo. So, this, currently it says this three-year agreement, et cetera, and then says four years, four years, four years. So, it should be this... So it should be this four-year agreement throughout.
You're making a verbal amendment?
In the text. In the text, yeah.
Is she making a verbal amendment?
Yes.
So that first mention in the text, where it says this parentheses, this three, then parentheses, number three, year agreement, that should be changed to this four parentheses, numeral four.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill's been amended.
Okay, so with, with that understanding, this is a four-year agreement that is ending at the end of the month. So this money is already encumbered just to get us through the end of the month. Then, in January, we will re-up the contract. And I think, Director, if you'd like to come up to the table, where we may do a waiver, et cetera, but that is a conversation for January.
Good afternoon. Heidi Norman, Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance.
Yeah, so if you, so I, I guess I'll let you just explain what the, what this software does. It's obviously critical software, what we're, yeah, go ahead.
So thank you for the verbal amendment. There was a typo in the, in the content. This was a four-year agreement from two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-three for ESRI, which is a geographic information system software. It underlies and provides the foundation for all of our different information systems, because most of it has to locate properties or assets that the city owns or maintains. So it's, the, what I'm asking for today is authorization to place money from my two thousand and twenty-three budget that was already budgeted for this and encumber it into the contract.
Good. Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I appreciate it. I, you mentioned city assets, but actually, ESRI and our GIs department are far more robust than just like our three hundred city facilities, right? So, you know, where the census data goes and how it gets managed in those layers, then you go kind of onto the city website of, like, where's the density of, you know, by race of population in the city, et cetera. I mean, that's also on this same platform, so this is included in the same contract, correct?
That is correct. It connects with many systems.
So it's actually way more powerful, and I really think members should, you know, if you haven't spent some time playing with our GIS layers, I'd encourage you to do so. I happen to be particularly fond of them. And I, we talked a lot today earlier about comprehensive planning, and some questions were asked about, for example, where are vacant lots? We just, this morning, did final vote on a separate contract where we are paying $750,000 to the Urban Redevelopment Authority to manage their public parcel inventory. How does that integrate with our much more cost-effective, citywide, comprehensive, both population and facility data, ARC GIS ESRI contract?
I'm sorry, Ms. Gross, I actually don't know the answer to that question.
Let's find that out, because that looks like a really hefty price tag. And in all of the, you know, thousand or so budget lines that we voted on in the last seven days, I didn't make a stink about, but I really had flagged it. Literally, I'm holding last week's agenda, and I'd actually flagged it. And that kind of concerns me. I know that you've done a great job at making sure that we integrate more information rather than isolate information apart from one another. I know that I've really been enthusiastic about the parcel-level data that our city finance and real estate and law are using, which is on Cartograph.
Yes, which now integrates with GIS.
Which integrates, and so what is this URA thing, right? And so I, I have concerns about that. So I can follow up, but not this. We already did final vote on the URA, $750,000 data. But we don't need to have a technology discussion right now, but you know how much I love data and mapping? So, you know, indulge me on another day, in the new year.
I'd be happy to.
That'd be great. Thank you. I'm supportive. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda. We do have meeting announcements. There will be no further council meetings for the rest of this week. Next Monday, December twenty-fifth, council and clerk's offices will be closed in observance of the Christmas holiday. And then on Thursday, December twenty-eighth, at ten a.m., council will hold its regular meeting of two thousand and twenty-three. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or card a clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty one thirty-eight. Speak registration closes at nine a.m. the day of the meeting. And then City Council will hold its swearing-in and reorganization ceremony on Monday, January eighth, at ten a.m. And our first full regular meeting of council will be Wednesday, January tenth, at ten a.m., and the standing committee meeting will begin at one thirty p.m. Is there anything from members?
Just wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Mr. Chair, quick question.
Any motion to recess here?
Yes, Councilwoman Cross?
Are we, are we recessing the meeting or adjourned?
We are recessing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick?
Could we, well, I guess, I should ask the others, but if we could try and have the recess on the same day as the.
That's what we.
Okay.